Ben, is the public hearing rules going to be put up here like they normally are? That tell everyone they can speak twice and that they have to limit their comments to two minutes? Because last public hearing, that's first time they haven't been there and I see they're not here tonight. Well, I was going to tell you how many come in today, but I was so tired. I had gone to a meeting the night before at the condo and I just couldn't. Evening's hard for me. We're going to film again on the 23rd. And I don't want it to just begin, or there'll be a couple of guests. But if the guests come, they'll be behind the screen just like, you know, when somebody wants concealment. I don't know if they're coming.
I guess they were in the drawing room.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, everybody here should have one. They should know about that. Yep, grab one of those. And the agenda. It will be the door greeter. I just can't film tomorrow or Thursday. Well, Thursday's the meeting, so I hope to get it before then.
You have three minutes. Just jump up there and hit it. You should be able to just spin it a little bit.
Hello, how are you? I'm good. I'm pretty good.
Engineering. Six thirty, we're going to call this meeting to order. First item of business is to adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt.
Potion made and seconded. All those in favor? Potion carries. For twelve minutes.
Move to approve.
Potion made and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Potion carries. Tonight, we're going to have a public hearing that's reapplication for conditional use. Call that public hearing. Start right now. It's going to be reapplication for a conditional use permit to allow for a planned unit development to include the construction of eight single-story fourplex residential buildings for rental purposes on approximate eight point eight acres. At public hearings, there's a procedure sheet over there if you'd like to get one. I call it to order and the city staff at this point will provide an affidavit of publication for the public hearing. Do we have that?
We have it.
Okay. And I'd like to hear your description of the proposal.
This is an application to Roach Development to do a planned development for eight single-story fourplex units. Property that's about just under nine acres, eight point eight acres in size. Most people here will know that this is a reapplication for something that was for you in April. At that meeting, there was a, went on to the city council and was denied by the city council on the April 20th meeting. Since that time, there have been some meetings between the applicants and some of the landowners in the area and the city staff. Fill you in on some of the details of the area if appropriate, but the result of all those meetings was a decision by the applicant to reapply. So that's why we're here tonight. There have been a couple of concerns addressed that I can just provide some initial background to. One concern, kind of related aspect, one concern has to do with whether somebody can reapply for a conditional use permit. Doing this with the city attorney and myself, there's nothing that I see that relates to a conditional use permit. If somebody can reapply for a conditional use permit, I won't say if denied. There are some sections related to rezonings that have that, but not for conditional use permits. And that kind of leads into the second concern, is that concern with spot zoning in this case. Because there is no zoning, rezoning application, it's part of this, it's just a condition of use permit. Planning unit development in the current zoning district that's on the area. So we can get into that if there's questions about it, but just not currently on the front. So we've had conversations with the city attorney about that aspect. Otherwise, it's essentially the same application as last time. In terms of layout on the property and such things.
Hey, like Bennett mentioned, there's a neighborhood meeting that pertained basically to this particular development with the representatives of the landowners adjacent to the property, as well as city staff and some council members. And that's basically where the basis of a lot of the conditions that you see in the back here stemmed from basically an open discussion on what their concerns were with the property, kind of what they would like to see with the development, try to screen the developments and kind of appease some of their concerns that they had for it. Some of the items that they brought up in terms of conditions they would like to see included were the setbacks. And all of these are listed on page fourteen of your public hearing. So we've got setbacks for the buildings as well as tree screening around the property. Garbage pickup to be within the development itself, not out on the curb on DeRozier or on Riverwood. Neutral color so that it matches the rest of the neighborhood. Single-story buildings so that, you know, in the event that it goes a different order, they couldn't change this and then move two or three or four stories, it has to be single-stories buildings. In addition to that, it has to be stick buildings. You can't have, you know, casted place concrete or tape-up type buildings. But that's really what generated a lot of these items back here. Staff did include a couple of items in terms of conditions that we would like to see on the property. One of them would be that the lot is surveyed. Right now, it's eight point acres. That's meets and bounds. We'd like to see that surveyed so that we can have irons in the field. So that's taken care of, as well as a final stormwater management plan of your apartment of any development coming into town. We would like to see that as well. They have provided basically a preliminary one, but we'd like to see the final one if this goes forward. So with that, you know, after that meeting, there were a number of individuals that did indicate that they would be in favor of it. Obviously, they can speak for themselves, but that's kind of what prompted those conditions as well. A reapplication is required tomorrow.
Okay. At this point, I'd like the applicant to graduate proposal. Go up to the podium. Give your name and address.
I'm Matt Roach with Roach Development. This is very similar to what we all saw last time. You remember, we all looked at the last public hearing. Most of the concern that were raised from the neighbors were traffic and things like that. And just a general, not too sure they want anything like this in the neighborhood. Since then, we have, and some of you were at these meetings, negotiated and discussed and given take quite a bit with the residents that are really affected, are the ones on DeRozier. And they agreed that this layout is the least intrusive to the neighborhood. There are other options we could go that wouldn't require the conditional use permit. And they're quite a bit more scorched earth, honestly, when it comes to where the sewer, water, roads and buildings are going to go. This, for this type of housing, which is only conditions, market rate housing, not low income, not subsidized, but market rate. We're talking average of a thousand a month per unit. With this type of project, we don't have the issues that were a concern to some people with the crime and the heavy traffic and just junk-in-the-yard type concerns. So, once we were able to alleviate some of those concerns with our immediate and affected neighbors, they came to agree that this was the best layout to fit these units on this site. And to do that requires the conditional use permit. And that's why we're here again with basically the same plan with a few minor changes, mostly ones that were at the request of the residents of DeRozier Drive. Any questions? Thank you.
At this point, we're going to ask for comments from the public. I would like to have you give your comments and remarks pertaining to this public hearing. You have two minutes. You can also come back for a second time. You can have two more minutes too. You can speak twice if you wish to. So I'll open that up to the public. And when you do want to speak, make sure you come up to the microphone, give your full name and address. And we'll receive it from then. Anyone wish to speak?
I had planned to give a letter to the city attorney, but it's also for distribution to you. Come to connect myself quickly so I can keep my comments rolling through.
My name is Luan Petrickay. I've been retained by Bruce Smith and his company, Sawmill Land and Trust. I was here last week at the city council meeting for the improvements. Today, I just want to, what I highlight in my letter is I feel very strongly that you are in fact in violation of your ordinance, which very clearly states that there shall not be... First of all, it is a rezoning type application. A conditional use permit by its very nature gets around changing the zoning and does involve the zoning. So I see it as a zoning application. And it says here that the effect of a denial is you already made a decision and that decision's final as far as the fact that you found the proposal you zoning is not in the best interest for the physical development of the city. Without the conditional use permit, it clearly does not fit within the zoning. So I don't know how anyone could say it doesn't apply. And what that means is no application that has been denied in the whole or part shall be submitted for a period of six months from the date of said order of denial. This was denied April 20th, so I stand by that. Also, what you may not realize is you're in a quasi-judicial position. That means you're like a judge. You're not supposed to be advocating for a position. You're not supposed to be advocating your co-members, the co-committee people. It's like a judge. Can you imagine if we were in court and you were able to go to the judge and say, hey, can you reconsider my situation for me? That's why I'm very much disturbed by these secret meetings. I don't know exactly what happened, but it does seem that select people are pushing the project, that they're not being impartial. And if you know who we are, you really have to recuse yourself, or the whole process is tainted. And your, any decision you make could be reversed or turned over. I'm running out of time here. It's something that, a glaring point, somehow the applicant seems to think that because there was a comprehensive plan, that they're following this plan. What you don't realize is that's not the ordinance. That was a proposal. And that proposal allows for these thirty-two units, which is approximately three times the density that you could have. We're talking about property less than five hundred feet from the Mississippi River. And Bruce will talk about, Bruce Smith, he'll talk about things that the city has not done. And the city administrator was...
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
There are a few issues here.
Please, please.
I'm sorry. Bruce Smith, Sawmill Land and Trust, 14319 Elm Street. There are a few issues here that rise to the forefront. There was a letter written dated the 30th of December 2013 from the headwaters board, the Mayor Van Rissingham. And those requirements have not been implemented into the city ordinances yet. You're two years late on that. The use of the comprehensive plan that was generated in 2005 and approved in 2006 is not reflected in any city ordinances yet. That doesn't apply. You can't put your three units, four units, whatever, on this property. There's a... Single-family residences and duplexes are allowed by your current existing ordinances. That works out to be for eight point eight acres, eleven units, maximum density duplexes. You can put twenty-two families in there. I, as a businessman of over thirty years, I fully appreciate their efforts. And I don't want to impinge on their abilities, but they have to abide by the rules. And if the rules haven't been implemented yet, it's about, it's about time you do. There's another issue there. I don't know how many of you remember the flood of 1972 up there? All they really did was put a little bit of riprap down Fletcher Creek. My father stopped the guy from the backhoe from coming and digging a ditch across my property. That's a flood plain and it was only a fifty-year flood. They need to have a hydrologist that's knowledgeable about these flow rates and the topo plan in the area that will review this from a professional point of view and address this. That hasn't even been thought about. They say that there's not an identified flood plain. The reason it's not been identified in the flood plain is because the FEMA firm panels from 1981 have not been incorporated into the city. They're, those poor people are going to get flooded out. They're not even putting in basements. And they were, the people that had basements up there were seven feet deep.
Anyone else?
Robin Hensel, 807 First Street, Southeast. This application is incomplete and inaccurate. That matters. According to your own rules in that packet on that table, it says, "Completed applications with all submitted requirements must be submitted to the planning and zoning department no fewer than twenty-four, twenty-five days prior to this meeting date, this public hearing date tonight." The city may omit, I won't read that sentence. "In order for your application to be accepted as complete and to have a public hearing scheduled, a copy of the plans and graphics must be submitted on eleven-by-seventeen inch paper or less and the following information provided. This application, that's number one null. Application must be completed, including responses to all parts of this application. Be sure the applicant or property owner signs the application." There's no date on his application. It says spring of 2015. That right there voids this plan. That one thing voids this. Secondly, it states in his application that there are going to be two entrances onto DeRozier. That's not true. There are going to be one, because you disallowed the west end, DeRozier. You have a rule in your stuff to do with streets, all streets that are owned by the city have to be a minimum fifty feet wide. You can look it up. DeRozier isn't that, any part of that. Okay, what are you going to do about bike lanes and traffic safety? You're going to have a sixty-six-foot wide road going into a twenty-two-foot wide road? That presents a danger for everybody that will traverse this, whether they're in a vehicle or on a bike or walking. Big danger. Okay? Private streets are to be held to city standards. What are you going to do about that? Our Roach is in compliance with all the rest of their applications and all the rest of their projects. If not, they can't go forward with this. That's in your laws.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bill Anderson, 14452 Elm Street. I am really upset at what was going on out here, is that there's two sides to this project, a north and a south side. And it seems to me that the developer and the engineers and the councilmen can have meetings, private meetings, concerned about the north side of the project, but they forget about the south side, people that live on the south side. There's a rumor, I think, out there about some setbacks. Why aren't the setbacks the same on the north side as the south side? The south side people were not invited to this meeting. And I think we are just as important as the north side. So I think that really folks, that the button should be pushed and shut this thing down and start over. And let's do it the right way and get all people involved. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, Phil and yourself and Kathy were at that same meeting.
You had a meeting with these two gentlemen, yourself and the Roaches, at the Roach property a couple of weeks ago where that list came out.
I was never at the Roach property a couple of weeks ago.
Well, the list came out there and it was that, the people told me that you were there. And it actually came from an alderman from that area. So these private meetings, Mr.?
Kemen.
Kemen. Got to come to a stop. Let's get everybody involved out there. You know, we brought a petition in from out there. I spent seven hours on a Sunday afternoon visiting with everybody out there. And everybody signed against this project. Doesn't that mean nothing to you people?
This was a public hearing. We have to have things that pertain to the public hearing. You're having an argument?
No, I'm not having an argument. I'm having, I'm trying to get out that, there was a petition signed. You people accepted it at the city council. And everybody signed it south of DeRozier. Drive because I did it personally. There wasn't one person that didn't sign it. Doesn't that petition mean anything? The people in that area are against this thing.
We're having a, a reapplication here. We're hearing, we understand all that stuff. We saw the petitions and everything and this is an advisory board. We will take into consideration things we have seen or heard or if anyone calls in, but...
No, I guess my biggest point to, I wanted to get across was, is that there's two sides of this project, a north and a south side. And it seems like they want to favor the north side but forget about the south side.
Okay, you got your point across. Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, I wanted to reiterate that on the application itself, right here, spring of 2015, that is not a date as required under your own rules. Secondly, this application is not filled out correctly to do a signage. It reads in their own writing under item one, minimal signs to the TPD to be discussed. What your rule state is, item number 12, approximate location of any proposed signs if applicable. That's not good in here, but you're mandated by your own rules that it has to be in here. So I've just given you two reasons why this proposal is invalid. This public hearing shouldn't be allowed because of those two things, if no other reason. Now getting back to the streetlights and the fact that your own rule state that no potential developer can go forward with any proposal. There is an alleyway that was never correctly addressed on the west side in Lindbergh Drive. It's a Roach development. That alleyway was never properly vacated.
We're dealing with, you are going to have to stop now.
I'm talking about the rules to do with your rules in planning and zoning and what states...
We are talking about this public hearing and we're not going to bring in anything from anywhere else around town.
But you have rules, you have laws that you have to go by.
I am saying stick to the public hearing.
You have laws and it is your job...
We understand the laws.
...to make sure that all their proposed...
Please...
Other projects are in compliance, are they?
Stick to the public hearing. Don't bring in other areas of town right now.
Are Roach's other properties, including the alleyway on Lindbergh Drive, the section of homes that's crushed or...
Third time I'm asking you to stick to the public hearing?
Okay, well, you heard my comments. I'm going on record saying that this shouldn't be happening because this application is not filled out accurately.
I'm going on record that you are, you are getting asked yours, though.
Yeah, right.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Lane. I live at 16542 Bridge Road. First, I want to say that I'm getting some mixed messages because I know Matt just said that, you know, it wasn't subsidized housing and our concerns when this was initially brought. And then Terry turned around and shamed us for being too middle-class and not wanting to help the poor. So I'm not sure what you guys are doing. So that mixes me up a little bit because I walked the property right here yesterday. Okay, there's all, there's all trees here. I counted 166 trees that would have to be torn down to build just that road going in there. And I, I guess I'm concerned that what they're doing is like raping our neighborhood. I don't see any enhancements and I just was talking with Bert and Betty Johnson in the corner and they are not in favor of this as well either because they are being assessed so much money and the money couldn't be put to better use than what they need. Now, there was no talk about utilities, no talk about a development until the Roach's bought it. And I don't have a problem with them, you know, unclustering, but they're putting a bunch of housing in the neighborhood that's, it's not characteristic of the neighborhood. There's 30, $300,000 homes there and they're putting in, you know, whatever apartments, if it's low rent or I don't, I don't know what it is because...
It's not. I made that clear earlier.
But, but your brother says something different. So there's mixed messages here and I'm concerned about my property tax values. Once they get the PUD, if it's approved, they'll do what they want and we have no choice. And, you know, I work hard for my money and I don't want my property taxes to go down. If you build something, if you put nice $300,000 homes, come on, let's do it. Anyway, thank you.
Anyone else?
We probably represent the biggest landholders in the area, starting at about here along this road and going west for 10 acres and then starting here on their west end and down to the river for another 10 acres. So we've got 20, over 20 acres of interest in this. And like I said, we don't mind you building something as long as is within the law, but there's a requirement with the Little Falls Ordinance 11.0525 that requires a natural landscape protection plan. I don't see it. Another issue is that when Richard Carlson met with the Bell Curry Township people, he made the statement in the minutes that the city proposes that if a part of the lot is in the corridor, all of it will be subject to the standards, that is the Headwaters Board standards. In those standards, and I don't know if you thought you were being benevolent or what in giving a 50-foot setback, but those standards require a 100-foot setback. When you do incorporate the things mandated by the Headwaters Board and the DNR, then they can proceed with their billing. I don't have a following of proceeding, but follow the rules. Thank you for your time.